Has everyone had an opportunity to review last month's minutes?
I didn't get a minute.
Well, I was the one who wasn't here. It was Friday that I was here.
I watched, I watched the meeting and discussion was about digital signs and sewer lateral ordinance. As far as I could tell, I don't know what the last 15 minutes of the meeting was about.
So let's, we will dispense with the reading and acceptance of the minutes for now.
I thought Kate said she was gonna try and put something together from her notes, but she didn't have a chance to do it right. Maybe we'll pick that up next month.
Is anybody attending via Zoom tonight?
I think, I don't know if anyone's attending. I know it's on.
Okay.
So Kate will not be here and Joe Conley sent me a message on the side of the work. So we are it, but we have enough. We have four. We're here.
In terms of being chair, I don't have anything to start with. Like, does anybody have a specific question?
Yes, I, I would like to discuss what you guys are discussing about the sign ordinances.
Okay.
Yes. I agree with what you said. First of all, I stood there and watched both the church sign and the Alden Borough sign. And the Alden Borough sign was three seconds, which is stupid. Church was five, which is fine. So I think five seconds was what you guys looked at.
Yes.
Is good. No flashing was a good idea. No scrolling, excellent idea. The height was also a very good idea, but one thing I asked, I put down was setbacks from the road. I don't know if there's a provision in that for setbacks.
I know that we have a general provision for signs of 10 feet from the right of way. I don't know if that would necessarily pertain to what we're talking about, but it's not a bad idea to have it sitting back 10 foot from the curb line or sidewalk.
Right. No scrolling, that sign has to change at once, which I, you know, you go from one to the next. And I think Kate was saying that some ordinance from, but allowed it to fade in and out as long as it was a second. That, that seemed pretty reasonable to me. One of the things you guys talked about was putting a time limit on it, but both the church and the borough sign are on all the time. And I don't think there's a reason for us to have to tell people.
Get a copy of the restrictions that we were looking at this morning.
I only heard what, what you were talking about.
Just this one copy for it.
Is this from our code? I don't think it's ours.
There was one from Montgomery County and one from Ben Salem. If it says digital signage in bold type, that's Montgomery on the top. And if it says section 232-717, that's Ben Salem.
Did you? 256-47, who was that?
Section 232-717. If that's on your top line, that's the Ben Salem one.
Yeah.
And if it says digital signage in bold face at the top, that's Montgomery Salem.
Uh, mine says 256-47. Anyway, did you ever measure the height exactly of the signs and the surface area?
I, I did not.
But I thought it was a good idea that we should limit the height off the ground, including the pedestal and the size of the, of the sign. I thought that was good. None, none in residential areas, because we do allow certain signs. I think we did have, we did have some people that had lighted, small, lighted signs for doctor or something like that. I don't know if they're, that was a pre-existing non-conformity. No scrolling, sign changes at once. That it's why, I, I did not particularly like the idea of dimming it at night, as long as we regulate the brightness of it. And I, I agree, we need to find out from, I think it's KC Signs that does that. I asked John for it and I never got it, what the limits were on that. I, I haven't contacted Casey and I'll reach out to him to see about that. Setback from the roadway. Back, when is it either doing? Oh, you asked, there was anything annoying about them? Sometimes the background colors, especially on our sign for a while, made it very hard to read the lettering. So I don't know if that can be regulated, but John got a lesson from the sign guy and it's much better now because he's got a better contrast between the letterings and the background sign.
And I believe there's an ADA regulation for contrast. I don't know if we're gonna get into ADA for these signs, but.
Why would that matter?
For people with visual disabilities, but it's, it is a measurement that tells you you can't have a dark gray with black letters for visual enhancement.
So I, I did not even know that that would come into play.
And it may not, but it is, it would perhaps give us documentation that is useful.
I think you're, you're kind of stretching a little bit.
Possibly.
I mean, I, and I think when you write a regulation for a sign, when you get past the prohibitions about purient words and pornography and things like that, the actual, and, and if you're, if you've already gotten past the safety issues, you know, no red lights and flashing lights and things.
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea. That you didn't make signs that look like they were regular traffic signs.
Or emergency vehicles heading for you.
Right. So once you get past that, I think, kind of going beyond that toward contrasting and even lighting, as long as it's not, you know, dangerous or somehow harmful. I think we're overstepping a little bit. ADA, I mean, we have, there's a complete set of standards for signage in ADA. And I don't know that I've ever seen in the ADA code, the changing signs, the changing white signs. And I know what you're referring to, but I don't know that it's something that we would try to regulate in this. We could tell them that they should follow federal, state, local
Right, okay.
mandates, but specifically trying to say, hey, let's follow section. I, I think that's a little much of a reach.
But it would be a good resource if we suddenly got a few more people who wanted them. Just a resource for them to make them more legible, which makes them safer because you can read them.
Well, this brings up an interesting question. It doesn't have directly to do with that. But do we have, when we're reinstalling a, a, a traffic pole that got hit, do we have to provide the audio chirping that you get for someone that's visually impaired?
Not if you're reinstalling.
No.
If you're installing new traffic signals or new traffic control devices, yes.
All right. When did that go into effect?
What, the chirping?
Yeah.
2014.
Okay.
Something like that.
Because, you know, we just had a pole wiped out at the municipal building and they're installing into the pole today. And I'm like, ooh, this, that just brought it up into my mind.
There's a basic rule of thumb with damaged things like that, that you should not be put to further test because it's, because of an accident or accident of God. So.
But if you were redesigning the intersection, then you don't have to do it.
Mandatory. They did all the traffic signals along Baltimore Place through Nansdowne and Clifton Heights.
And they came down on Springfield Road to, to us at Five Points, how far down they came.
Right. All of those have to have it. They, they had what was required at the time.
Right.
At the time of design.
Right.
So they have the push buttons and the hands.
Right. But they now added a chirping.
They had the chirping.
So those were my things about signs. The only really thing I disagreed with was making the signs go dim at night. Because, I mean, there's still businesses there and people driving by. As long as they meet all the other requirements, there's no reason why they shouldn't be able to continue to advertise.
I mean, we haven't gotten any complaints from the house across the only residential on the corner with the two signs. They haven't said anything, have they?
Not that I'm aware of. So I also will talk about the sewer lateral came up. I pushed pretty hard for that to be passed, but Kate was right. There was tremendous resistance to the expense for rental properties, considering that there's a significant number of owner occupied units or small number of units in town. And there was pushback, what is it, a hundred dollars to inspect the rental each year? Is that the cost to that, to the homeowner?
I believe that's what it is.
Right. So, and they were saying, wow, they're gonna charge them four times that amount every three years because it was originally we put it at three, in order to check the sewer lateral. And there was definitely a lot of pushback from council members at the time, some of whom are no longer on council. And also from, there were audience members that were owners of small, you know, like they had a duplex or a twin dup. And they were saying, wow, that's a lot. That's a, you know, a hundred dollars a year to have my apartment inspected, it was one thing. But they have to have every three years another $400 inspection on top of that. So I didn't, I don't disagree with removing the apartments out of there. I think we should, and I heard Mr. Kupernas comments, but I think we should require it for transfers, absolutely. And I'm guessing that if there is damage that shows up, and you were saying it's a civil matter between the seller and the buyer, but if it isn't fixed, they don't get a UNO to move in. Is that, is that, is that how it works?
Like, no, so, so far what we've done is once we have identified a problem, we have notified both buyer and seller that there is a specific time limit under which this problem has to be corrected. So you two have to tell us how you wish to proceed. And in general, it's six months. So we, we've identified a problem. We're telling you that you've got six months to fix it. We don't really care who fixes it.
Right.
Or who pays for it. But we're telling you that because there is a problem, you have sewers leaking
Right.
into, into the ground, that it has to be done within six months.
What happens when the person doesn't get it done in six months? You throw them out?
No, starts, start writing citations.
But they do get use and occupancy, it's just a conditional.
That's correct.
Because, so that the buyers can still move in, all that can proceed because it's not a life, it's not a life or death situation.
Well, not only that, it's not on the interior of the building.
Yes.
You know, we, we went back a couple of years ago and took a look at what sort of things actually impact the safety of residents, specifically children. Your sidewalks don't necessarily, your driveways don't, your curbs don't, your downspouts don't. But if you don't have a smoke alarm, a handrail, carbon monoxide detector, fire extinguisher, that is a direct impact. So we've taken that whole different approach. You can, you can let that become a part of the agreement between buyer and seller. We have a document that the buyer has to execute, admitting to
Right.
having to take it over. And when they don't, there are specific penalties and fines in the document, which are fairly strong.
Yeah.
So it encourages them to get the work done.
Right.
Mechanically, if we find somebody hasn't done it in 14, 15 months, depending upon the time of year, they may get another three or four.
Right.
Right now, if it happens to be May, June, July, they end up with a citation. And they go into district for failure to maintain the property. So there is a difference.
Right.
We've taken a different, and this would fall in that same category. To my mind, when I was talking about this with Glenn Olden, it was, you know, we know we have a sewer issue. We know this building is a problem. But there's no reason to shut this one down in particular if the lateral immediately alongside it from the twin is probably in the same position. So yes, we need to get it fixed, but does it impact? You know, if you don't have this gaping hole in the front lawn where a child can fall in, is it really, do we need to do it today? And that's why I recommend it, except it's six months as a time.
So at the end of six months, they start getting citations?
They get citations. If the cavern in the front lawn opens up, we post it with an order of abatement. Because at this point, it's become
That's what happened over on Silver.
It becomes a public nuisance, public danger. When it impacts the pedestrians or vehicles, when this lack of action impacts the general public, then we have to take some sort of overt action. That's what happened at Silver Way.
Right. And that was repaired and they didn't, I did see pictures of them repairing the main on either side of it where the tee-in, and they actually had to fix the manhole where they went to block it at either manhole so they could work on it. And they found that the manhole was deteriorating, but guess what? Well, I talked to you about that a month ago. There's another leak because it's starting somewhere further down underneath, because it runs under the sidewalk there. There's another hole developing in the easement between the curb and sidewalk. So it's gotta be dug up again. Because the repair that was done in that area, and it was good as far as they could see on either side, that must have damaged the pipe further down the line, unfortunately.
That's why we dropped the camera in there and she was coming up.
Yeah. So.
And I have heard higher prices for sewer laterals. I think it's a 400. I've heard 12, 1400.
You're talking about just hammering the line? I, I, I know a guy, I've been, heard people three to 400 dollar range, just, just to camera it. I mean, if you have a long driveway or something, but we, we measure most of ours
Yeah.
are about 60 feet roughly, most. Some are shorter, some are a little longer, but there aren't many that are, you know, 500 feet that, that we have to run.
I don't think we only watch that.
Couple of the other pushbacks that came on, on the lateral ordinance was, and then I have a question. You go in on a transfer and you make them take the sump pump out of the sanitary line and make it go out onto the grass in the back. But once you leave, there's nothing that says that they don't reconnect it right back up to where it was before. And I don't think we have a way, if it's a transfer of a single family home, of knowing if that's been done or not, unless we have to go back in and inspect for something else or till the next transfer, correct?
Right.
Right. And then another thing that came up was that there's some of the older homes over on Beach and Albert that literally the downspouts go disappear underground. And I know some of them used to go out through the curb, but there's a thought that they might, because they were built so long, would be tied into the sanitary sewer line and creating that, because part of what I came up with was the surge that we had. Not all of it came from laterals, but that that was a point of contention that, you know, the saying that people say, well, and I, my, my point was, look, this is, we're not gonna solve it with one thing, but we have to keep chipping away. And it wasn't cares money, it's, it's the ARA money. And we already have three, one, one sanitary sewer and one storm sewer repair and a second sanitary sewer that we, if we have enough money, that we're gonna fix. That, you know, are problems because we're gonna, that's a lot, you know, we get $400,000, which isn't a super lot. But you might as well use it to fix your infrastructure. So the borough is gonna do, take steps to do what it can to correct situations where, where the ladder, the mains we know are damaged or are both broken. One of them actually runs behind, it goes under the half, under the property of the backyards on one street to the other, and it's collapsed. It's already been there for a hundred years. Don't know why they didn't run it in the street, running it behind the backyards, but that's the way they did it.
It's easier.
So.
When you talk about the downspouts that come down and they go into a terracotta pipe, I, I personally have never experienced that cross connection with sanitary.
Right.
And it would not be all that difficult to determine that you have cross connection. Plus, you would get into the area of it, you would smell the sewer piss. There's no trap. So if it's a pipe that's going straight down into the ground, then it goes someplace.
But it doesn't, there's no visible exit point anywhere.
But as I said, I've never, I've, I've never seen that particular cross connection. Don't exactly know where a lot of those go, but you would know if it went into your sanitary.
And so I think we need to move forward and push for it to be done on transfers because you're right. People that are moving in shouldn't be hit with that expense. And it's not, like you said, you can't get a house if the heating isn't right. You can't get a house if there's termites there. You can't move into the house if, you know, there's a foundation problem. So I think this qualifies, it should be inspected and transferred. Now, and my understanding from Kate was that you were also gonna leave in the businesses as part of it. There was, there was a little bit of an objection to that. That was not the main focus of the attack. It was the apartments was the main focus of the attack. So.
So I, I, the notes that I'm looking at here, I actually wrote that down, was we remove the rental units if we're only proposing transfers. That's exactly what we have said.
What about the business part?
The business is an annual inspection.
Yeah.
For those that produce grease. So if you have a mom and pop store that doesn't actually have fryer or anything that all they have is hand sink and they sell products.
And they do hot dogs.
Right. But if you're not, if it's not a grease producing entity, then you don't have to do it every year. You can do it every three years. And one last item was, hey, if someone puts in a PVC line, probably don't have to look at that for at least 10 years. Because that PVC is not going to deteriorate and you're only looking for breaks every 10 years. And that, there we're talking about businesses a lot, this.
So you're saying if they, if they have to replace it and it's PVC, they've given an exemption for a long period of time?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, and the only reason you would go back in is if they replaced a section of it.
Right.
And they didn't replace the whole thing. Someone comes in and puts a PVC line from the building through the trap into, into the sewer.
Right.
You'll never have to look at that again. Not in our lifetime.
Right.
I mean, that's a minimum of 40 years before anything goes on.
Unless there's some sort of crushing force from above that causes it to.
Yeah, but.
Should be backfilled correctly with vinyl, but anyway, so that should protect it.
Right. Got stone on bottom, you got stone.
What does it have to be? Does that have to be scheduled 20 or it does have to be scheduled for PVC? Or is it, is it considered drainways, DW?
Yeah, it's drain, so the schedule 40 only goes underneath the road.
Okay. Yeah. It doesn't have to be CPDC or anything, but it just gets a 40 right on PVC, which is exploding in price anyway. So, I mean, I think we should, we should make the argument again to council. And I, I know Kate set this out. She didn't have the time to review it completely with inspections because she still has rental minutes in here. So that has to come out.
Right. It's, my notes from last time, remove the rental units, only do them on transfers.
Right.
This posted inspection is gonna be borne by the seller. And then the cost of repairs can be shared by both or either.
Right.
And that would require a document language and a civil agreement for the buyers and sellers, which would not be so much different from the one that we use right now for concrete and driveways and things of that nature.
But what if, sorry, realtor hats on, the, how the sale is, buyer is responsible for all repairs, UNO, et cetera.
And buyer signs a document to say that.
Okay, but because if we're putting sellers responsible for it in here, but there are many real estate contracts that exempt the seller from that and the buyer accepts it.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure.
The sellers are still responsible to pay for and have the inspection, which determines what is wrong with the house.
But we've had buyers pay for UNOs. That's why I'm just concerned that.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not.
We could put language in there saying that the seller is responsible unless the parties come up with another arrangement.
I'm, I'm going to tell you that you're, you're making it more confusing than necessary.
All right.
I know what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay. The borough's position is that the seller's responsible.
The owner's is on the seller.
Right. The owner's is on the seller. If the seller and the buyer choose between the two of them to make some sort of a civil agreement, we don't ever get involved in that.
Okay.
Okay, that's not, it's not our, it's not, it's not our responsibility or our privilege to be a party to that civil agreement.
You just want it done.
Yes. So this, we, we tell the seller, this is your responsibility. If the seller comes back and says, this person's gonna pay for it, I don't care.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Right. And, and, and once the report is generated and there's a list, just like, you know, there could be handrails and steps and fire extinguishers and sewer lateral. Okay, now you're, you're gonna buy it as is, it's gonna transfer as a limited access
Right.
property? Fine. You're not gonna get a certificate of occupancy until everything on the list, including a lateral, has been corrected. So see, there's, there's a, there's a caveat to that limited access certificate.
Right.
A conditional says the person can move in and take 12, 12 months generally to correct problems. Limited access certificate says you're buying a dead piece of property.
Right.
And it's your responsibility to make it work.
Yes.
So everything, including the sewer lateral, would have to be corrected before that gets an occupancy certificate.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, I just wanna.
Right. But we don't, I mean, we tell the seller, that's your responsibility.
Okay.
You tell me how it's gonna work.
And I guess my question is, I had written, to me, apartments, especially here in Alden, since they're all fairly old, have to be one of the more potential sites of leakage? Is there any way we could, like every five years, every 10 years?
I think Dan's point is if you.
If you put that in there, it won't pass.
Oh, okay. They're just.
So we're going, we're taking it one step.
I wasn't there then, so.
After we go through and we find 20 sewer laterals that need to be repaired on transfers, and then it's like, oh, maybe we really should go back and include apartments.
Okay, okay.
And I think we did, we did that actually in Glenn Olden. I, the exact number's escaping me, but I believe we, out of the 38 or so sewer lateral inspections we did in the last six months, 22 had a problem.
Oh, but you told me last time it was a quarter of the ones that you.
Yeah, it's, it's jumped up. It has jumped. And I don't know if that's because what we're seeing are old, not necessarily older houses, but houses of older residents being transferred that were not as well maintained. Where we started out at 25%, we, we went right past 50.
Yeah. I called up for Darby to get their numbers because they instituted one not that long ago. And they never, they never called me back. I think they did it in May of 2020. So they should have a year and a half worth of inspection reports, but the guy never called me back. What's Colin's experience been? They just started horrible. What do you mean horrible? It means if there's bad?
We mean, we have more sewer lateral replacements than we have inspections.
Oh, wow.
How does that, how does that happen?
Well, you, you get the, the lateral that has to be repaired because it is old and the place is selling. And then three doors away, there's a big hole in the street. So we ordered that one, you know, replace it or fix it. So there's actually more replacements than there are lateral sales inspections.
There's a couple, there's a couple of places in town I should break down the addresses where somebody put a cone up in the cones. There's a couple, there's a couple of places in town I should write down the addresses where somebody put a cone up and the cone is halfway disappeared in the ground, so I presume that's where. And I think it's an an easement, a couple of those I've seen. So I, I think if we remove the rental units and just re, re, re-review this, that we could present it to council. Uh, not next week, because they're going to meet on Wednesday, but for April. Uh, because this, we went through this before and this is the letter that accompanied it explaining why we needed to do it and. Yeah, twenty twenty, both Upper Darby and Glen Olden Borough passed similar ordinance. And I used your twenty-five percent in there at the time. So. I think if we go back, take the apartments out. And maybe go five years for the businesses, except for those that make. What, what's the only place where we do that giant, right?
Pretty much.
Wasn't there a, there was a Japanese restaurant or a Chinese restaurant in the center originally?
It's a dental office now.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, that's the only other food establishment I could think of at the, at the time.
Right.
How are those sewers running? Do you remember? Is there?
Out the back, down the driveway and the loading area driveway down the back and then out to. The, their side of Providence Road.
Right.
Till it gets to hundred fifty feet or so from Oak Avenue and then it crosses Oak Avenue. And then comes down across, comes, crosses Providence, across Oak and then down.
Is each, is each store have a connection out of it?
At least stores connected to the main that's in the back.
Yeah, but they, like example, the Giant used to be the Giant and the Righty originally. So there, they would actually have two lines.
That's correct.
In their building, because when they took over the Righty, took the wall down, they have two sewers. Would. Would the one need to be inspected every year as well because it's not in a food preparation area?
I think, you know, mechanically speaking, if you do the one line.
Yeah.
And to find out there's a problem, it only makes good sense to do the other one. And vice versa, if you do the one that's grease producing and it's clear.
Right.
There's no point in looking at the other.
Right.
And I have one other star on my note, the lateral inspections will be completed by one of five authorized agents approved by Alden. How do these people get chosen? Are they gonna do some sort of, let's fix our prices? So we all make more money? I mean, what's going to be the system for those five or is that not our problem?
Oh, it is our problem.
Okay.
They have to be certified in order to do this work.
Okay.
And not, not everyone who buys a camera is allowed to do it.
Okay.
So there are probably fifteen certified agencies within this area. And I know for Glen Olden, we post three and then we rotate. According to who's using what. And, and you'll find, as we did, that folks gravitate to, in particular, Anton Plumbing.
Yeah.
Because they're accessible, they're not that expensive.
Right.
They do a good job.
Yeah.
They fill out all for everything, so realtors will start to talk amongst themselves and. We're using Anton two to one, three to one over anybody else.
Okay.
So I, we'll put up five names, we could rotate through them, but realtors are going to come back with their own.
Right, and, but I just, I might said five and I didn't know how many.
Well, we came to that because the, the experience in Glen Olden was that there were three authorized. And it's kind of like any other contractor that you have, when you go to do a building permit, to make sure that they have the liability. And their, uh, you know, workers comp and all that, so these companies have to have their certification.
Okay.
To do the work, it's just like, you know, me going in there with the camera and I'm telling you it's okay.
The tiny ball man.
And, and one of the things that came up as an objection, and you explained it very well, was that. Uh, there was one in Glen Olden where there was a big to-do about it, but the problem was. They did a dye test because they couldn't get the camera in or they didn't have a camera that day.
Camera was too large to fit through.
Right, and it, and it, it showed that they had a leak and they really didn't have a leak once the camera did. It's that it was in the up pipe.
It was in.
It wasn't in the laterals, it was in, it was in the stand pipe is where the leak was and. That, but the problem is, and it says in here, it has to be a video.
Right.
And that property, that was another pushback I got. Oh, yeah, they, they had one in Glen Olden and they said they had a leak and they didn't have a leak and they. And that's when I asked you what the heck happened over there. Very simple explanation, they couldn't get the camera they had through, so they decided to do a dye test. Not acceptable, you have to take, you have to camera, period.
Okay.
And that shows the example where, what they, I guess they had to fix the stand pipe anyway, right?
Yes, but.
That's a lot less expensive than trying to.
Sounds a lot less expensive there. It's really, other than the hole in the ground, there's really no public threat. It's not like you have sewage leaking or you have gas, you know, sewer gas coming out. The stand pipe is behind the trap, so the trap is already, is already in place, there's no sewer gas coming out. You do get the dirt going in there.
Right.
Which is potentially is going to.
Block.
Block the trap. Uh, and of course you get the hole in the ground, but, um. It's not like a broken lateral. A lot less expensive to fix.
The other question I had was, I know you were asking for three things to do and I know signs and sewer laterals were one. And two, the digital sign. And then I know Kate suggested zoning, but I didn't get to hear the end of the meeting, so I don't know if you ever settled on a third item.
Businesses.
What?
Business inspections.
Business, well. See, that's part of the thing is that you're going to be hitting them up. They're al- almost, we have eight of the, eight places in town, which I didn't even know Hallmark gets inspected for food. Which I was not aware of, so you have the Giant. You have the three gas stations, the two, a sprinkler of Providence, one at Open Providence. You have the Stop and Go. The Swim Club. Hallmark, which I didn't know, and the Family Dollar. They already are going to be hit with a health inspection every year, which is going to be, which is going to be much more significant than we would imagine. So, uh, and they're going to be doing sewer lateral every five years. And as you, we talked about this before, that the, I mean, there was a reason why they went through the business ordinance because. Uh, which, which are body products that divided up their property without selling anybody.
So, yeah, the ones that you just talked about are, are going to get, and. There could be, uh, some working. Agreement, let's say, uh, for doing the health and the business at the same time or in the same. Yeah, I know that makes it more difficult that the county is going to be doing the health as opposed to our doing the health and the business. But we still have to look at the other businesses, we still have to make sure that the sprinkler systems are working.
I guess we need to look at that ordinance and see what needs to be changed in it.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we need to change there is the way we calculate how much we charge. Probably go to a simple square footage. And, and not necessarily. By each square foot, but in certain blocks, it's something from zero to five thousand.
Does that need to be annual or could it be every other year?
Every other year. Now I know that things change that quickly.
You wouldn't push it to three, right?
Probably not. I mean, we do every other year inspections of every park. For rentals and. We find a lot of stuff goes wrong in two years, uh, even in the book complexes, so. I've tried to tell them to go to annuals. Suppose everybody else doesn't.
Yeah.
Again, we find a lot of stuff wrong, annual inspections, that's worth the time and effort. But. There are two years and they're not changing, so. And as I mentioned to you when I had the discussion with Health Department, they do have a right to inspect apartments. It's, it's in the state and county code, but they are, they are not going to do it because they found. So many towns already do apartment inspections on their own that they were not going to get involved with that. Uh, at least at the beginning, and I don't know if they're going to look at towns that don't have it and do it there, but they're. I mean, that's five years down the road.
As we say, they, they have. They have their hands full.
Yep.
With just doing health inspections.
Yep. There's a tremendous difference when you start doing inspections in apartment complexes and. You're looking at structures and fire safety. All the stuff that doesn't necessarily come under Health Office's expertise.
So I guess our order of what needs to be done is that, uh. Do the language. For lateral ordinance. Removing apartments. Number two, we need to get more info on the digital signs, I'll get all the case.
And if, you know, you.
For the brightness of it.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I can see Alden's sign. From my bathroom window at night and when there's no leaves and I'm half a block away.
And.
I don't mind, but I can see it.
And I guess, so we were, we did talk, we did talk about having that, having the, you know. Illumination decreased during the night hours.
But there was a discussion about freezing, so not allowing it to scroll.
The sign goes to, I, I have a note here, the sign goes static when the business is not open.
Yeah, but see, I don't think that that's fair, if they're doing, and I mean, it, it's a part of their. It's a part of their advertising and I don't see, maybe you go to dimmers, but I don't see a reason why they couldn't keep. As long as they meet all the other requirements, why they couldn't keep.
Yeah.
The sign changing as long as it was every five seconds and it didn't flash or show a traffic signal or something like that.
Please return at eight AM for next sign.
No, I mean, I was, that was a suggestion, it was, it was a thought, you know, if the business is not open, why is their sign? Still changing, but look, that's, just like I said before, there's some overreaches that may be one of.
But, I mean, people are coming home from work at twenty-four hours a day. They deserve the same information if it's not distracting and a safety hazard.
Right.
I mean, do we expect to get a lot more digital signs? So, I mean, Giant, who else would be putting them up?
The gas stations. I think, I think your point that they will have one for the.
Storage.
The storage facility, right, there'll be one there. You'll get, you'll get hit with one as they come underneath the truck.
But we just, I mean, it's one of our problems is we don't have a lot of. Non-residential income. And I was just thinking, where else would they be putting them up?
Well, you could go to Stop and Go, all the gas stations could put it up. I guess you couldn't put it up at the shopping center because they're limited in the amount of signs that they're allowed to have, so each store could have their own, as an example.
No, but they could, uh. Do the ground signs, I mean, that's. A very good question as to whether or not, uh. You know, let's say the Hallmark, if they came in and said, okay, we're taking down that sign, we're putting a digital sign there. Whether or not that.
On, on, we're, we're going to allow them, we would pass a digital sign.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, we just brought up a point that I hadn't thought of, would we allow? I, I think in here we talked about having a ground sign.
Yes, I agree with that.
And that's, that was kind of where we were with it, so. We have to be specific.
Because you did, the, the point came up about goffs across the street. Because they have it on a pedestal and it's up pretty high and they're always flashing the different beers or whatever that they have to sell. I would be against having it up high, I think it should be on the ground, but if they take the sign off the building. Would they be permitted to have a digital sign of their own out on the edge of the property?
I don't know, I'd have to go back.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question.
I don't, I don't think anyone's going to take the sign off their building now. I mean, they may want to change it, they may want to make it some, but I doubt that Hallmark would stand to not have their name up on the front of the building. But I think, we said ground only signs, that was one of the things that we talked about.
I agree with that.
I think we have to. Take one step further with the writing of the ordinance and make. That sort of thing, we're talking about the sign band and pylon signs would specifically prohibit them. You know, it's kind of because.
Prohibit them as digital signs.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, the gas stations already have.
Right.
Signs up there.
And they have an interesting sign because their signs are digital, but they don't change flag, well, they do now, but the gas changes every hour.
But they change it all at once.
Right. You notice when the barrel of oil goes up immediately.
Yeah, before they.
Today, the barrels of oil dipped thirteen percent on, on Texas crude and fifteen percent on imported. Oil down to like a hundred and five dollars a barrel.
But the prices didn't.
But you won't see that price effect for months.
Oh, you. If we ever see it.
Okay. That is, unless there was something in the last fifteen minutes of the meeting.
I was there, we talked about, the last thing we talked about was the business.
Uh, I didn't see it, that's the one I didn't hear. Or plus, we need to look at that hard and see what needs to come in and go out. And I think I did produce it with the last thing, but we'll, I'll send it around again.
Okay.
So I wasn't here last month, it's something that came up.
Joe's stuck at work, Kate was stuck at work and everybody's working extended hours these days, so. Alright, do you have, I'm assuming you have all the rest of it?
I don't know if I do or not.
You have the one that starts with digital signs?
I don't think so, unless that was something that I sent out before. And what, did you say, if it's a digital sign, that was from Ben Salem?
Sign is Montgomery County from twenty fourteen.
Oh, yeah, I actually sent that out, it was a lot, it was a very big.
Yeah.
It was a very big, uh, a very detailed, uh, and interesting.
Yeah.
Thing to read.
And the other one's Ben Salem, but I could not find a date. Oh, twenty sixteen, see, all you have to do is just relook with fresh eyes and there it is, twenty sixteen from Ben Salem.
To ask you a question. Oh, yes. Uh, not related to this, but I got a call from. Senator Carney's office today. They're working to get the ramp at one oh four. Down, she's already talked to the state about it and she's going to be talking to AmRamp, why they decide, decided to stop where they stopped, I don't, I don't know.
So I got a call from, I believe it's AmRamp, uh, yesterday, as a matter of fact, and they said, what kind of choices are. They told me they were contacted by the Senator's office.
Yes.
They said, well, what, what choices do we have? And I said, well. Anything that's going to go from where it is to the public sidewalk.
Yeah.
It kind of stopped in the middle of nowhere. And they said, well, could we do it in concrete? I said, well, yeah, I mean, if you chose to put a five by five pad at the base of the existing ramp and then come off that. And come down to two percent grade down to the sidewalk, which I think is completely possible.
Right.
The answer is yes, so it's probably a very simple solution.
Oh, there you go.
We will get back to you and let, let you know.
Yeah, she said that the, 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 the staff member said she was going to call them tomorrow because she hadn't communicated with them yet, so.
But I heard from her yesterday, I talked to her yesterday.
Well, it's making progress for that poor gentleman. I had nothing else, uh, from watching the, the meeting, and I apologize, Mr. I, I just. It slipped my mind with all the other stuff that's been going on and because I wasn't at the meeting last month and I didn't look at the video until tonight when I got home from work. I said, I wonder if we put, posted a, an agenda, we did not, which is not good to do, I gotta get in the habit. Or you need to get the habit, call John and tell him to post the agenda, one or the other.
Was it done?
What?
Was it done? No, there was no agenda made up.
I don't think there was an agenda posted on this, on the site, because I, I just let it slip my mind, I didn't even look. Because I saw your text when I was, I didn't see it till I sat in here. But I did. But I did, I did, uh, answer your question as to why. Just gotta. There it is, okay, all right, hold on, innocent agendas.
Well, and now it's not on the site because it's not, not always available, you know, it's like.
No, only the January and February are posted, so. We have to get in the habit and make sure we, we post that. Oh, the other thing is it's. Normally it's the week after. I think there's three times where we're gonna be just like this, where we're gonna be meeting, but this is the week after. We're actually have a few days we're gonna be the day after the council caucus or the, because of the way the dates fall, so.
So to sum this up, um, first thing we're gonna do is. Clean up the sewer lateral ordinance.
Yes, I made some corrections on this, and I think Kate's got the, the original one, I haven't changed that.
So this, this has turned into our A.
Yeah.
And then B is our sign ordinance.
Yeah.
And, um, I had the notes here.
Right.
You did last time and we have what we said tonight. Um, and then C is gonna be taking a hard look at the business inspections. And I'm probably just gonna need some good amount of work.
Yeah. Other, other communities you know of that have business inspections?
Only Glen Alden that we work in.
And you do that how often?
Yearly.
You do it every year? What kind of charges do you charge by square footage?
Yeah, well, yes, up to, you know, from zero to five thousand, five to ten, ten to twenty five. And then supermarkets.
Oh, supermarkets are a specialty?
Well, they're eighty five thousand, so yeah, it's just. I mean, you get the mom and pop, you get the, uh, C stores.
So what kind of things do you, well, it's probably in the ordinance, but what kind of things do you look for at Glen Alden? Not food related. Since Glen Alden has their, their own food inspection program.
So it's all, um, safety. It's primarily fire safety. You go in, you check to make sure that their. Sprinkler system has been certified recently, that their fire alarm system has been tested and certified. That the backflow preventers on both the sprinkler system and the, you know, domestic water have been certified every year. Walk through and make sure all of their exit signs are lit. Occasionally, on a smaller store, if you suspect that there is an issue, you'll have them pull the plug on the, um, circuit. So you can check to make sure that all of the emergency lighting comes on. Your exit doors are open and cleared. There's no cracks in, you know, the floors that are gonna be tripping hazards, same thing with the sidewalks and the parking area. Sometimes the parking areas have to be restripped there for a number of years. Uh, now, uh, more recently, we've looked at the way you get in and out, whether or not they're accessible.
Getting in and out of what?
Getting in and out of the store.
Oh, out of the.
You know, so in most places, I've gotten to the point where they have to be, um, you know, accessible for all persons, so. These are the items that you're, you're looking at. I try to make it simple when I say, at some point in time, this store opened. Um, and, and it was given an occupancy because some other inspector went through. And made sure that everything here complies with the existing code. All we're doing today is to make sure that nothing has gotten worse than those before. And that if something like fire alarm system or sprinkler system that they're constantly being. Either upgraded or certified so that they're operational. So that's, that's pretty much it. They don't, they don't take forever. Now that. The supermarkets, sometimes you go in them at the park, the bulk, not the whole ways apart as well, it's on the aisles. You know, they reduced the, the aisle widths and not with just a little cardboard cutout thing, but they physically put. Displays that can't be easily moved, you know, in the way of the aisles. The aisles are supposed to be seven foot in between and they're reduced to five. They have to make them move. Cause they're supposed to be seven, not five.
And that, would that, that wouldn't be something that would come up in a health inspection?
No. Okay, so they're gonna run right back through the kitchen.
But they, they actually have three, as I know, they have three food preparation areas. They have the meat department, they have the fish department, they have the, uh, the deli. And then they have, uh, when they make their salads and their fruits, they have a station that you can just barely see through the sidewall on the first aisle. And they bring them out, they, they put them in there. I'm sure they got a test all that to make sure it's the set, the right temperature.
The bakery.
Uh, they know, great, forgot about the bakery, that's five. They actually make some pretty big cakes.
They do, so I always got them for work.
All right, we have some stuff, I will get some things out, I'll get Kate to change that and we can look at it and we'll make a recommendation. For council for, if next month's caucus meeting, bring it back up again.
And you work at minutes this time. And I will keep my Thursdays and Fridays separate.
Sorry you had to sit outside for twenty minutes.
That's why I said, don't panic, think about this. And then I went, you thought yesterday was Wednesday and it wasn't. Today's Friday.
I have often when I start working, seven days a week, it, it, uh. The days just all blend together.
Yeah, I used to hope I was.
I guess we're, are we adjourned?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a, a motion to adjourn.
I move, uh, two moves off second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
I can remember distinctly when every day used to have its own flavor when I was a senior.